Get in.
The United States of America and to the Republic where which is stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First step would be for rule minutes.
I didn't see anything wrong. I would move that we accept the minutes as presented.
Set it up. Favor. Okay. Next, we will have nominations for vice president for 2023. I'd like to nominate Heather Foy for Vice President. I'd like to nominate, or can I make a nomination? I'd like to nominate Pam Crozier. Seconds.
So do we? Can you say both of them?
My second Pam.
Anyone else?
I'll say it Heather.
This Heather was first. On favor Heather, Vice President?
I think I will abstain.
All in favor of Pam for Vice President?
I won't say.
I was gonna say.
Alright, next step will be nomination for President. Nominate Reed Black Jr. for President. I'll second that. All in favor? Take over, Mr. President.
That was way too quick. Well. We'll try to get through this as quickly as we can. You know, I like to call for a German sermon always.
Can't do that anymore.
I can't do it, but someone else will have to step up. Other appointments that we need to fill. Judy vacated Southeastern Regional Planning Commission. And also the EMA, so those two positions would be available. Is there anyone that would like to accept those?
I'd be interested in the EMA.
EMA. Anybody else? So.
I would be interested in that if nobody else wants it. You know, I'm the new guy here, so I was just gonna take what you guys didn't want.
The salvation one is difficult because it needs during the day and for cells.
Oh.
So. Was someone, do we need a second on that, or are we just approve it?
I need a second.
Discuss it?
When I will mention in regards to Dwayne's offer to, I think, serve on a board, you know, where you're needed. I will mention the two I'm currently on and are not there yet are the insurance and the public defender. I have struggled to make a, I had to miss a couple of the insurance meetings. I don't feel like there's conflict of interest with me being a full-time hospital employee. There definitely are some times the discussion is beneficial with my knowledge, but at times I've also had to kind of abstain or maybe not be as involved. So, and I'm, I'm, so I come on the public defender board, so I would be happy to step down from the insurance committee. I let Heather White know that and told her that I felt like at this meeting, we're going to be making nominations or offers to serve on board, so I don't know if that's something Dwayne might be interested in.
The EMA, is there only one of us that sits on that? Then I retract that then.
With Heather's statement, I'd be willing to take the insurance board if you want to do the EMA, because
that would be good.
That would probably be a better fit.
Okay.
Yeah, I was, for some reason, I was thinking there was two of us that sit on the EMA, but there's only been one of us, right?
So.
I'll make a motion for Dwayne for the EMA board.
Okay.
Second motion.
So Dwayne goes on the EMA? And the Regional Southeast Regional Planning Commission. We have Chris has offered to do it.
The Regional Southeast.
I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
Okay. So. Heather, you want, you'd prefer to drop off the?
I prefer to keep that position on the public defender board and maybe let Chris step into that role on insurance board. I know he runs a lot.
So you're nominating Chris? Can I have a second?
I'll second.
So can we vote on it, Chris, for the insurance board?
And I believe the Southeastern Regional Plan Commission, I think they meet quarterly, but Chris is right, it's during the day and she's in for sale. And that's hard for almost their working during the day.
Working during.
Do they do those meetings via Zoom or Teams? I mean, it would seem practical.
I don't know. I mean, Judy might know that, but I'm just starting here this evening.
Are the meetings more frequent now that it had the broadband?
I think they are. And she, Judy is going to stay just attending those meetings for a time.
So I think you can have a member of the public appointed if you.
I would entertain a motion for Judy to continue to serve on that board if it's acceptable there. I'll verify this. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
So.
It does say in the letter, Commissioner's appointment, their representative, and then it does say the Commissioner's representative must be one of the Commissioners and a municipal representative must be an elected official.
Is that for the?
That's for when I'm on.
That's for the solid.
Yes, thank you. That's for the solid ways district. Yes, sorry, that is not for, you're correct, that is not for the Regional Plan Commission. I apologize.
So we're still good with Judy for Southeast Regional?
I am.
Nomination?
I nominate that.
Can we vote for that?
Yep.
Approved. Any other openings that might be created here?
Oh, ones I have listed are, look like they are filled by the current member of the council.
I've been, I've been serving on the Community Corrections Board for several years now. If anyone would like to do that, if not, I can continue to take that position, but it's now it may be difficult for Dwayne to, because it's typically a 11:30 meeting, but we do meet via Teams or via Zoom, so it's a little better. I can do that if no one else wants me.
And I have been serving on the EMA, or I'm sorry, 911 Committee. If possible, I'd like to stay on that. I've also served on the well. Planning, Planning Commission, and if someone wants that, I'd be willing to give that one up. If not, I'll continue.
When do they meet now?
Their first Tuesday of the month, and it's usually at 5:30.
Is that a one-year commitment, or is that?
I mean. Theoretically, it's one year, but. They'll check with you each year, see if you're coming back, which we don't know until now, so. They had asked me earlier, but I said that it was still. Say, do I want that, or not? Stay on it if nobody wants it? I've got a conflict on that date.
Yeah, I would say we have some very extension board, extension board now there also, and we have, it's the first Tuesday quarterly.
So I think, I think we have all the committees and boards set then. I'll entertain a motion to accept that as is.
I want to make sure, Dwayne is gonna be on Community Corrections, right?
Dwayne is gonna be.
EMA.
Okay.
I'm doing it.
You're doing Community Corrections.
So everybody's good with that?
I only have the one, so. Are there any other, any others that are vacant right now? We can keep it just that way, it'll be fine.
Typically, new members, we ease them in slowly.
Hey, I like that. Okay, that works.
Don't want you to have to brain overload it.
So we have a recommendation or a motion to take the board as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, can we have a second? Three seconds, and all in favor, say aye and raise your hand. Okay, adopt meeting guidelines, I'm gonna turn that over to.
Okay, so when we attended newly elected official training, it's recommended that all boards adopt at their first meeting guidelines for 2023 for each year. I sent out a copy of just basically how we already conduct business. The only addition is that to be added to the auditor, you must contact the auditor's office at least 24 hours before to be added to the agenda. And that public comment will be limited to three minutes unless the council president grants additional time. And that's kind of standard, and it protects the board in the long run, is what was told to us at training.
Yeah, addendum to that, those people tend to come to those last minute things that need to be read on then. I would rather at least get the information a week in.
Right, I try to always send, I've been going over with people that, I normally send all of your information to you guys the Friday before, so that you guys have the weekend to look over anything. And then, of course, we have advertising requirements that on big items, I have to advertise. I need about 15 days before the meeting, actually, so. But I think especially for public, they definitely need to let us know 24 hours before if they have a big issue.
More questions or discussion? We entertain a motion to accept Heather's proposal.
Make a motion to accept the meeting guidelines for 2023.
Second, please.
One second.
All those in favor, say aye. So we have we've done.
Yeah.
So we can go to county loans.
Yeah, so in previous years, we've done a county loan from Coon Courthouse to County General to ensure that we do not go into the red throughout the year. And we actually reduced that from 1.5 million last year to 1.25, and I think it's best if we stayed at that level for another year. I just feel like with the budget going up, it would be best to do that. In addition to that loan, as discussed in December, the reassessment fund had an issue where to keep that fund in the red, we should, or out of the red. We should probably put some money over there. I just went with half of their contract amount. And June, they'll receive their first disbursement, and then in December, they would pay this amount back. And then at budget time, they'll be requesting a larger amount for 2024 to help get caught up on the years that were lagged behind.
And that's 75,000 also coming from Coon Courthouse.
Yes, so I looked at sales disclosure, because originally I thought sales disclosure would be able to help that. They have part-time money coming out of that at $10,000, and then their fund balance right now was 30,000, so I didn't feel like we should split it up. It's just easier if it's from one place.
I want to make a motion to approve loans from Coon Courthouse to County General and and reassessment.
One second.
We have a motion and a second. I'll entertain a motion or a vote. I'll say aye. Motion carries. Only 23 salary ordinance for buy. I have a chance to see that.
I sent that out. The main revision on that this time was the amounts that we changed, that we agreed to change in December for the Sheriff's Department and the jail.
Is that the moving of the funds around, the same amounts going out?
Within the amount.
Okay.
It just lined up different positions.
Okay.
And I think it'll be.
Real outfit.
Reality.
I think it will be a lot easier to follow when we go through budgets this year.
We've got any numbers? Are looking to formally approve the salary.
Yes.
Again, for small changes, I would make a motion that we approve the 2023 salary ordinance with minor changes following our December meeting.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, say aye. Okay, additional transfers. So I guess we're at the point where I'll give the heads of department an opportunity if they want to address the council. We have a sheriff here.
I have some things to drop off at Chris's request the other day, last meeting. I got those for you. Captain Hawkins, he busted his butt on it, so. It was a little bit painstaking, but we got it taken care of. I didn't forget you, I just think. So that is, that is the current vehicle inventory for the Sheriff's Department. The red, the lines in red will indicate vehicles that are, have either been auctioned off, sold, or in the process thereof. The other vehicles are indicated in there. Say the best way to understand, because the way this spreadsheet works, it printed out weird, but I will show you how to put it all together here. If you take the, I believe, first and second page, they'll actually line up like that, and then that'll tell you who's the vehicle is issued to or what it status is. All the way across, and it says, when it was taken out of service, if it's still under warranty, when it was issued, the year of the vehicle, the make, the model, and the VIN number. And then there's a few notes up to the side, and those are the, where I indicated the high mileage. The 200,000-plus mile vehicles. So those are the vehicles that we are going to try to quote, pool vehicles, that we're gonna make pool vehicles, and that will be used as pool vehicles as such and not as issued vehicles. Does that make sense? And then on the very back page, or sorry, not the second to the back page, there's three things at the end, and those are just a trailer, two trailers, and an ATV.
Mind me, that's a little hard. I struggle sometimes to either remember or really line up some designation and responsibilities, split shared responsibilities for our school resource officers. And obviously, it gets changed a little bit in the past, that the school paid this much, or this was provided by the Sheriff's Department, or this is an MPD officer. I obviously, Denny's name's on here, but I didn't see McVeigh. Do we not provide Jacobs' vehicle?
So the school purchased that one, and then the city in Madison purchased one of them, and then we had one of them. So everybody pitched in, so we just had the one.
Obviously. Well, no, I guess we're just referring just to the great Madison.
Thurston's came from HPD.
Yes.
Yeah. It was an old HPD vehicle. Any other question on that? The next thing I just want to drop off would be, wanted to issue it out for you guys' first reading, and it's just an amendment, it's a ordinance to the commissary to, so that way we can use the commissary to pay certain bills, but we just have to propose the ordinance before you guys heard it. So I do have that as well. And then I brought subject matter expert with me, just in case you guys had really in-depth questions. It's to, she was the one that put the tireless hours into prepare said.
I don't want to leave Ray out.
So because it is an ordinance, we will actually, we are supposed to read it three times in meeting. So if you guys do a public reading today, you could read it at the next month, and then if there's no objection, we can forego the third reading and vote on it at the next. Well, no, we could handle everything about.
And none of these proposed expenses are new or different? It doesn't look like it, than what we've seen historically being paid for at this.
No, it's technicality. According to Indiana Code, there are some things that we're paying for at the commissary that we should have a local ordinance saying that it's okay to pay that out of the commissary. Stuff that we've paid for for years, they're saying, well, technically, you need to, so instead of being, technically, we need to have it actually on paper.
It just means that it has to be.
Yeah, State Board of Accounts required this in our last audit. I know that there was some miscommunication. It was actually brought to a commissioner meeting, and we were going to go forward with it, but Pat had not looked over it at that point, so I know Pat has looked over it at this point, and everything is good with it now.
And the special postage, I know that was something I learned when I became a member of the council, that even our inmates postage is studied for this county. The special postage was listed here would be postage for the department office expense.
Right, like sometimes we require, or sometimes we may be over-innated, we can send, we can now send blood. So when we do blood draws for DUI or brutality-related crashes, we can send that via mail to the lab, and we don't have to drive up to the lab and drop it off, so stuff like that would be. Anything else?
Obviously, it does not include inmate postage.
No.
So someone have to read it.
I don't even have a copy in front of me.
Sorry.
Take a paragraph, go around the room.
Whereas the Jefferson County Sheriff, by and through the Jefferson County Board of Commissioners, seeks to adopt that helps, that should take.
What was it?
Yeah. The original, because it was supposed to go to Commissioners, I could absolutely change that. I'll change that.
Before the Board of County Council seeks to adopt additional provisions to the Sheriff's Commissary Fund, and these expenditures or the use of the purposes set forth below shall be in addition to and not in lieu of or replacement for the expenditure specifically authorized by Indiana Code 36, 8, 10, 21, D1 through 8. Whereas Jefferson County, by and through the Jefferson County Council, wishes to add local provisions to the Jefferson County Commissary Fund pursuant to Indiana Code 36, 8, 10, 21. Now, therefore, the Jefferson County, by and through the Jefferson County Council, adopts the set provisions for additional disbursement of funds to include into the Sheriff's Commissary Fund pursuant to Indiana 36, 8, 10, 21, D9 to the following, shall include advertising, reimbursement for staff for goods, pre-employment evaluation, Jefferson County community-based programs, special postage, office maintenance, and/or supplies, law enforcement memberships, inmate activities, and cellular service as defined as below. Section 1, advertising, advertising shall include print and/or radio must include activity or program Sheriff's Department intended to reduce to prevent occurrences of criminal activity and shall include public safety information. Section 2, reimbursement to staff for goods. Reimbursement to Jefferson County Sheriff's Office staff for items purchased for training and/or use during training to include meals during training, attire for training, and/or actual training. Shall also include P9 reimbursement for equipment, food purchases while at training. Section 3, pre-employment evaluations prior to employment, all Jefferson County deputies are sent to both physical and mental pre-employment evaluations. All appointments are scheduled by the Sheriff's Office for potential employees. Section 4, community-based programs, Jefferson County Sheriff's Office participates in local community-based programs, holiday parades, festivals. Costs incurred should also include participation fees, literature to pass out in accordance with Indiana Code 36, 8, 10, 21, D7, and goods to pass. Section 5, special postage, to include United States Postal Service, FedEx, and US or UPS articles that need to be sent with special delivery instructions, special postage, and/or first-class delivery. Section 6, office maintenance, office maintenance and/or supplies for special projects like carpet cleaning, waxing, stripping of floors, additional cleaning supplies, and painting of offices. Section 7, memberships, law enforcement memberships to include Fraternal Order of Police and Indiana Sheriff's Association memberships for the entire Jefferson County Sheriff's Office staff. Section 8, inmate postage and made activities include annual events, additional food purchased for work details and/or programs, assistance with obtaining general education diploma, and any type of recreational equipment. Section 9, cellphone bill, cellular phone bill with mobile phones, hotspots, computer accessibility throughout the county, and services incurred. Section ten, meals, pay for meals during special programming, classes, and/or training. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect from its passage. Further, this ordinance shall become a chapter of the Jefferson County Code of Ordinance, designated for chapter when code is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will still be reading. So that will be after the third reading or second reading.
If there's no objections, you guys can vote to forego the third reading next month.
Okay. All right. How was your first week?
It's great.
I can tell you, she put in probably just as many hours as I did. So the only other thing I have for you guys tonight is just my required report of the commissary fund.
This year. We've had one these years.
It's been a while. Is it technically required? Please quarterly?
Twice a year.
It's twice, twice there.
Well, if I can get it to separate. And that is all I have for you guys, and I think I have anything for me. Oh, one other thing I will say. I will get a better list together. I'm compiling, I'm working with Libby and our front office staff. We will probably have a few unexpected expenses that have occurred through going through files and records and paper piles and stuff like that. So I'll get a better list of those potentially overdue items and bring those to you as, as I get them compiled. So a forewarning.
And I mentioned that is, we, we have had this problem before. The sheriff's retirement, where we have not, we were paying a year behind, and then occasionally we have to pay two years. But then if we kept on the cycle and paid to date, we wouldn't have this problem. We may have one of those adjustments coming soon, too.
Or jail members.
Yes, there is one eighty-three. In-house would be, I think we have forty out going. Yeah, we have forty out.
And I was just gonna ask. Since you described last month, maybe how a couple positions and titles would maybe be restructured, and we certainly anticipated that, and then new leadership. Just that flow chart, and I know second changes, so you may create it and then a month from now, once a jailer may leave, and you may have a vacancy or a new man. Is that something that's already done, that could be emailed to us, just or we?
No, we're actually conducting interviews right now for the jail supervisory positions and the new jail staff member positions. And then we have to do merit, we're gonna hold merit board interviews for the supervisory positions on the roadside. But once I get it, once I get it all filled, instead of, unless you guys want, I can do one current. Or I can wait until everybody's settled and then give you one finalized chart.
Sheriff, we have the roster, we can send.
Yeah, we can send you the roster, the staff roster.
And you can seriously hold off until that structure is done with the new positions. I just always not feel bad, but, you know, somebody mentions a county employee, it's just nice for me to know what position they're in.
Absolutely.
Make sure they're who they are and support them any way I can, so.
Yeah, we're just, like I said, it's kind of a, it's a slow start because we've got interviews coupled with me learning my duties and trying to get all that stuff straightened out, so, but we're working on it. Hope to have that to you guys soon. Thank you. Not a problem.
I just want to give you a jail update. It's kind of exciting out there. Today is out there, they're going sidewalks, they're curbs, they're painting cell fronts, walls, they're hanging drywall. Water's on, electric's in, the gas meter was supposed to be set today. The FFP, which is the equipment for the inside, like the inmates clothing, accessories, blankets, and all that. John and I have been working on that, Ben, we're hitting a curve on that. So we just about got that wrapped up. And I've been working, sure, plenty there. And we've had very few change orders, doors, maybe a wall here and there that they requested, and cement insulation in the. But if you look at these, best way to describe this, security for staff and basically the public, if you look at the blue, go to this one first. This right here was in the original design. Okay, there was to be a gate there. Okay, and on the back, other half of that went over here, and it actually cut straight down and went into the building. Okay, we just got a wild hair and got a quote to encompass the property. This is your red here, okay? And then if you go over on the east side, it actually picked up there and went all the way around. We moved that gate down to there and brought it over to the parking lot. But the quote on that was ludicrous. So we backed off, and Ben's compromise was to control the traffic here going in. Put a gate, two gates and an island there. And then, of course, we can do some molder, dress it up, you know, so they don't drive up in there. And then also on this, to rectify that, we want to come down there anyway. So we just went around this new service road we've added. So we just come down to there, a single exit gate only. And it'd be like semis or box trucks when they bring their stuff out. You don't need to enter that way and go back to the building, which is original. So I asked JP Willett, he's over at construction with the song on that part of it, since he wasn't having luck with his other fence contractor. I said, I'm about local. He said, I'm open to it. So I got this sheet in to our local fencing contractor to see if we can work something out. Does that pretty well cover what?
Yeah. It was just kind of on the, on the gate for the, we'll call it the west entrance to the jail. That was more of a offset operational security thing, just to keep people and vehicles, vehicles would be the biggest threat to the sheriff's office, you know, it's like driving onto the property. Or somebody that's just a looky-loo, they drive back our road, they get, by the time they get back to the back gate going into the Sallyport, and they realize that, hey, we can't get through at this point. Now we're gonna have to turn, do a three-point turnaround, you know, in a road that's not even wide enough to do that. So then we're gonna have vehicles stuck in the mud. And if we can control them at a choke point, at the entry point, it would just be more simplistic and safer for the employees.
And I went ahead and had him to quote, if we encompassed the whole thing, like this other edition, and then to quote what we've had, because what's in the blue was quoted in the original bit anywhere.
Okay.
So we're not talking like the total amount. There'll be some credit, I guess, best way to describe it in there.
So there's, to do the whole around is just so much.
I'll just tell you right now, it was a hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand dollars additional, which is, that's not realistic to me.
Chain link backs.
Ten for chain link backs. You know, if anything, it'd be nice, what we come back, if we at least go ahead and do a look on the west entrance, the little red right there on the stand parking lot. For their safety, so to speak. I just wanted to give you an update of where we are, and it's pretty impressive out there.
What have they done? Do we contact you?
John put an email out, if you want to go, it's gonna be the fourteenth.
Is this Saturday, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
Eight-thirty?
Be well worth your time, because there won't be any workers in there or noise or anything.
Put up, me, John, and Bobby.
Can't do much about that. Anyway, that's all.
A little more hearing protection.
Right. No, he means for John.
Eight-thirty, if somebody wants to go, right?
Yeah, just let John know, so he can put the number down.
The only thing we ask is, nobody under the eighteen for insurance first.
And you might wear their shoes, but I guarantee it's gonna be.
All right, other public comments or anyone? Look, I told you I was gonna run with these fast, what else?
Do we want to officially welcome Mr. Mayor of the council?
Welcome. Well, you've been here how many months, attending the meeting?
I just kind of, I figured that I would just kind of slide over, so that's pretty much what I'm, so.
Yeah. We look forward to working with you, boy.
I would, I feel honored to be here. And really, if you think about it, there's a lot of exciting things, I think, coming for Jefferson County down the road. Look forward to working with you guys, it's an honor to be here. Judy was good with numbers and with people, and she cared about the people from the fourth district, so I'm just gonna try to continue that.
Sheriff Flynn, I want to comment on your ability to get out in front of the public and put out your, your team, not only your footprint of what you're doing in the office, but what your team is doing so far for twenty-three. So kudos to you and your team for being out there in front of the public.
I can't do it without them.
I know, it's a team effort, but I think that everyone in the community, like seeing that, knowing what's going on in our community. So that's hard to do, and I think that you're doing a good job, you're getting off to a good start. So thank you for doing that.
I can't do it, folks, I'm not allowed to make the call for you.
Okay, hold on, before you, I was just gonna say, if somebody was curious, it came up last month, and I'm sure he's not here. We are close to setting a meeting. I'm gonna serve on a small task force, but a little worker regarding the defibrillators and the county and some obviously wise purchasing options, and then maintenance of those as well. And there's a few folks that are gonna serve on that little worker, and we'll be meeting at the tail end of this month. It looks like our very beginning of February, so hopefully maybe February we're meeting, we may have some information for the council, just to report back. I just wanted to mention that, since Troy wasn't here tonight.
Anybody have any updates on the animal shelter for us?
And do you have any updates?
You heard anything? You heard anything, Bob? Nothing? So no news is good news? I think everything is going fairly well with budgeting. Claims are being rendered, payroll is going well. On my end of everything, it seems to be going. I'm not sure how their daily business is going, but as far as the accounting side.
Adoption, an actual event that's set up, and the dates on the calendar, and starting to promote that in the community. I think their adoptions have been going well, but I can have an actual Adopt an Animal Day set up, and we'll be promoting that here in the next couple of weeks, and that's great.
Are the vets still doing their turns and going in to check on the animals? Is that what we're doing now, the vets going in, or is it?
I'm not certain of that.
As far as I know, they are.
Okay.
So they're still in.
My understanding was Mondays, Mondays at different vet offices, they would have appointments.
Trainable.
They're sharing Mondays.
Anything we want to remind everybody on their?
CFA.
Financial.
Yeah, those are due on the eighteenth. So those that you have those to do, I'll send out another reminder via text. So those that have their accounts that are open, that have not been closed out, make sure you get those filed. So by noon on the eighteen.
I just want to congratulate our new president, our new vice president, challenges ahead in twenty-twenty-three.
Absolutely.